So that you can do that because then you'd be able to recreate a little bit.
I'm in between the devil and me, gee.
If he picks it a while, it's not far from home. And you might think you're a little bit near something.
It's a fair one.
We had a cheater.
They weren't really having a good time. No, they're at least happy. Oh, they're not specific. Right. They're specific. This is the difference.
This is what I thought.
It's probably the same.
Yeah. We were working with the same people.
Probably was this one.
You know, with the vessel. Do you know the history of this thing?
No.
I heard out of the world that at one point there was like a whole community.
There is a, so you live in Dinuba, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. There's a lot going on, you know. I just, I leased about thirty thousand square feet to a company that sells signed vinyl. And they're out of Nebraska. This is like, they've been here a long time. They just got, they need more space. So. Well, industrial has gone crazy here. I mean, it's like, I can't keep up with it. Yeah, we've become a shipping. You ever do any medical?
Resource material. I've never been able to look it up on that.
Right. Yeah.
But I mean, you know, the package I, they send us.
I have a lot of influence. I have a lot of influence of Quiadelpa. Would you consider working for them?
How do you bring them up on? Because I've had them last year. And then when we line digital.
I was never able to get this page. Is everybody ready?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because I wasn't, so. Good morning, welcome to the August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, uh, Tullary County Planning Commission. Please join me to salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So we'll have roll call, please. I'm here.
Mick Alroy?
Present.
Millies?
Here.
Elliot?
Here.
Diaz?
Here.
Whitlatch?
Present.
Here.
Aguilas?
Here.
So we're going to item number two. Uh, this is the public comment time. At this time, members of public may comment on any item not appearing on our agenda. So if you wish to participate in today's public comment via phone, if you're listening in, you can call five-five-nine-six-two-four-seven-zero-one-three. You'll be connected to the boardroom to address the planning commission the same as you were here in person. Please state your name and address for the record in order to be heard by everyone in the room. Your statements will go out live audio stream and will be included in the audio recording of the meeting. This meeting can be viewed on the Planning Commission meeting, Tulare County main page website. Under state law, matters presented in this time cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the items come up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties may have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the chair. Here's a note here that says in order to be considered Planning Commission testimony of public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for the public hearing. As a courtesy to those that attend, please turn off and, uh, put your cell phones in alert mode or airplane mode or whatever keeps them quiet. Uh, in compliance with the American Disability Act, if you need special assistance to participate in this meeting, please contact Resource Management at five-five-nine-six-two-four-seven-zero-zero-zero. So is there anyone who would like to address any item that's not on our agenda for today? If so, please come forward. And I will give, uh, one minute in case someone's listening that wants to call in, so we'll Okay, sixty seconds, hearing none, we'll move on to item three, approval of the minutes. And I wasn't at the last meeting, so, uh, I don't think I have to leave, but would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
I motion that we approve the minutes from the last meeting, from August twelfth, twenty twenty.
Second, please. Okay, roll call and push the buttons.
Let me, yeah, open up your votes. Actually, let me reset it because there you go, Mick Alroy, you can.
Everybody pushed their button, okay. To abstain, and so motion was, motion was carried. Uh, moving right along, we'll go to, uh, item four. This is a public map hearing. All actions on map in this section of the general will be heard in one public hearing unless anyone wishing to address any one of these items requests it to be pulled for a separate hearing, and there hasn't seemed to be any. So no staff presentation will be given on any items unless requested in case there is a separate vote on these items. To members of public, you may wish to participate in today's public hearing via telephone. That's five-five-nine-six-two-four-seven-zero-one-three. You will be connected to the boardroom to address the planning commission the same manners if you were here. If you choose not to call in, you may also persist, participate by submitting an email as the item is being heard. Email should be, include sender's name, address for the record. These emails should include the following subject, agenda item, in this case it's one A, and can be sent to the clerk of the Planning Commission at, all lowercase, planning commission, one word, at C O dot Tulare dot C A dot U S. Every effort will be made, uh, to read your comments into the record, but some comments may not be read due to time limitations. Comments received after the public hearing is, has been closed will be made part of the record if you receive before the end of the meeting, uh, if received before the end of the meeting. That concludes the instructions for today's public hearing. Okay, item A is a tentative parcel map, P P M two-zero-dash-zero-one-eight, Gabriel Hernandez and Forster Weber and Associates LLC. It's a categorical exemption and tentative map, P P M two-zero-dash-zero-one-eight, to divide eight point two acres into four parcels. Um, the, uh, it's a residential zoning mobile home with twelve thousand square foot minimum. The, um, the site location is two-six-nine-five, Route eighty-four, on the southwest corner, Route eighty-four and Avenue twenty-eight, in the incorporated area of Allensworth. And, uh, there is no staff, uh, Sandy Roper is our representative from the county. And, um, so there, is there any comments? I opened the public hearing. As you're seeing none, uh, I'll close that, go to the recommendation or the vote from the Planning Commission. Someone like to make a motion to approve this, please?
Do we have to have a public?
I did. I opened it.
Don't pass out.
I closed it.
Do, do we have to wait the minute for people on the phone or no?
We have no phone calls.
No one call, okay.
Okay. We're moving ahead, so. So I have a motion to approve? Thanks, Maria.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Yeah. Um, I'm, uh, a motion to approve categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title fourteen, California Code of Regulation, Section fifteen-three-oh-three, Class three pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number P P M twenty-dash-zero-one-eight.
Do I have a second, please? Push the button.
I'll second.
Okay. Call for the vote then.
Let me hit the second button.
Let me reset the, let me reset the vote.
Please, and here's a picture, whoops.
Go ahead, Mick Alroy.
Call for the vote. Uh, it is approved with one dissenting person, so. Okay, we're moving on to item, uh, five-five-A. Is there anything after that? Yes, there is. Members of the public, if you wish to participate in today's public hearing via telephone, please call six-two-four, five-five-nine-six-two-four-seven-zero-one-three. You'll be connected to the, the boardroom to address the planning commission the same manners if you were here. Please state your name and address for the record in order to be heard by everyone on the record, in the room, rather. Your statements will go out live stream and will be included in the audio, uh, recording of the, uh, meeting. The timer will be set for three minutes, so please adhere to the time limit. If you choose not to call in, you may also participate by submitting an email as the item is being heard. Emails should include sender's name, address for the records. Emails should include the following, the agenda item, which is five-A, and, um, and sent to the clerk of the Planning Commission at, all lowercase, one word, planning commission at C O dot Tulare dot C A dot U S. Every effort will be made to read your comments into the records, but some comments may not be read for time limitations. Comments received after the public hearing has closed will be made part of the record if you receive before the end of the meeting. That concludes the instructions for today's public hearing. So, um, we'll go to item A, zone variance, P Z two-zero-dash-zero-one-zero, tentative parcel map, P P M two-zero-dash-zero-two-zero. Jason Torres, uh, categorical exemption and zone variance, P Z two-zero-dash-zero-one-zero, tentative parcel map. Uh, see, also we have P P M two-zero-zero-two-zero, um, that's the tentative map number, and P Z V two-zero-dash-zero-one, excuse me, zero-one-zero has been submitted to allow division of the parcel that has fewer than twenty acres. Creates the parcels that are less than an acre in size, an A E twenty, uh, which is A E forty zone. P P M twenty-dash-zero-two-zero has been submitted to allow division of acres into two parcels. Parcel one is point nine, parcel two is point nine-seven, in an A E twenty zone. The site is located on sixteen-sixty B Avenue, three ninety-two, on the side of Avenue three ti, uh, three ninety-two, approximately five hundred twenty-five feet, east of Road sixteen, Kingsburg, so it's in the northwest part of our county. And, um, Sandy Roper is our staff member, so welcome Sandy and good morning.
Thank you Chairman Whitlatch and members of the commission.
Brett, you have a lot to read, so.
Um, I'm Sandy Roper with the Resource Management Agency, and the application is zone variance number P Z V twenty-dash-zero-one-zero and tentative parcel map, P P M twenty-dash-zero-two-zero The variance has been submitted to allow the division of a parcel that has fewer than twenty acres and also the creation of parcels that are less than an acre in size in the A E twenty zone district. The zone variance has been submitted in conjunction with the tentative parcel map. The tentative parcel map, it has been submitted to allow the division of one point eight-nine acres into two parcels. Parcel one, zero point nine-two acres, and parcel two, zero point nine-seven acres. And a parcel map waiver has been requested. The applicant is Jason Torres. Uh, the chairman has already gone over the location. On the screen now is the vicinity map on the left, which shows the general location of the site. And the map on the right is the hearing notification map. And the site is indicated and the shaded areas surrounding the site are the adjacent parcels that, uh, property owners were sent public hearing notices. Uh, the next slide is the proposed parcel map. Uh, all of the parcels will have direct access to Avenue three ninety-two through an existing twenty-foot wide private easement. On the screen now, on the left, is a aerial photograph which shows the existing site, which contains a rural residence, a swimming pool, a solar, uh, solar array, septic system, domestic well, and fallow ground. Uh, the image on the right shows the existing zoning of the site, which is A E twenty. A final map waiver has been requested. Uh, the proposal is consistent with the Kings River Plan and the land use designation is agricultural. Uh, the land use designation would not change with the division of land. The zoning variance and tentative parcel map are consistent with the relevant policies of the Tulare County General Plan. The zoning is A E twenty, which allows intensive ag uses, plus one single-family residence or mobile home. Uh, Section sixteen of the Tulare County zoning ordinance authorizes the filing of variance applications when practical difficulties or unnecessary physical hardships or results inconsistent with the general purpose of this ordinance result through strict and literal interpretation of the provisions thereof. The commission is authorized to hold hearings and make decisions for variances. Uh, there are five findings that are required. If you want, I can go over them in detail. Uh, the first one would be that there are special circumstances applicable to the property involved, including size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings, so that strict application of the zoning ordinance deprives the property of privileges enjoyed by other property in the vicinity and under identical zoning classification. The project proposes to allow the division of one point eight-nine acres into two parcels, uh, zero point nine-two acres for parcel one and zero point nine-seven for parcel two in the A E twenty zone. The project site is in an area where several small rural residential parcels are clustered within a one-mile radius of the project site. Seventy parcels currently exist in configurations of less than twenty acres, and fifteen of the seventy parcels are less than one acre in size. Strict application of the zoning ordinance would deprive the applicant of this privilege that is enjoyed by other property in the vicinity. The second finding would be that the granting of the variance will be subject to such conditions as will assure that the adjustment thereby authorized shall not constitute a grant of special privileges inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and the zone which the property is situated. Uh, again, the zone variance is not going to constitute a grant of special privilege because of the number of properties within one mile, uh, that have, uh, configurations of less than twenty acres. And, uh, as I said before, there are seventy of those and fifteen of the seventy are less than one acre. Uh, so granting the variance would not be a grant of special privilege because of all of the other parcels that, uh, already are enjoying that privilege. Uh, the third finding would be that the variance will not authorize a use or activity which is not otherwise expressly authorized in the zone regulation governing the parcel, uh, property. Uh, the subject property is located in the, uh, exclusive agricultural zone, A E twenty. A Section nine point six D of the zoning ordinance pertaining to divisions of land allows division of land in the A E twenty zone. In addition, Section fifteen, D two F and G, uh, pertain to division of land exceptions and allowed divisions of land that create homesite parcels. Any use that's proposed would, to be established in the future would have to be established in compliance with the regulations of the A E twenty zone. Uh, therefore, the use would not otherwise expressly, uh, therefore, no use not otherwise expressly permitted in the zone will occur. Uh, the next finding, the granting of the variance is consistent with the general plan. Uh, the property is located within the Kings River Plan, uh, southeast of the city of Kingsburg, with the land use designation of agricultural. Uh, Resource Management Agency staff, having performed the review, the project site, have determined that the current land use designation in which the variance shall be granted is compatible with the use of smaller than permitted parcel creation. Uh, the granting of the variance is consistent with the general plan. The parcel is not restricted by a Williamson Act contract, and for consultation, uh, it was sent to the Tulare County Surveyors Office, the Assessor Environmental Health Services Division, Fire Department, uh, have responded to the consultation notice, which was sent on July thirteenth of two thousand twenty. And this concludes the staff report unless there are any questions.
Could you, uh, bring the map up again because I'm, I'm seeing this as northwest Tulare County, but there, you're saying southeast Kingsburg and that road is about as far west as you can go in Tulare County, so. Do you have a bigger map? Okay, yeah, okay. I got it, thank you. Uh, I will, uh, first open the, uh, the, uh, public testimony. Has anyone like to come up and, uh, give testimony on this for the public?
How close is that to the school? Is that the next street over or is that where the school is at? The school on three ninety-six?
So, yeah, three ninety?
Three ninety-six?
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay. So I'm not seeing that I'll give a minute for someone to call in and comment, so minute In the meantime, during that minute, if somebody changes their mind, you're still Seeing that no one has called in and no one has come up to testify, I will close the public testimony and move on to the, uh, Planning Commission. It's two motions, and this will be time to discuss or make a motion to approve, two motions. Speak up.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, just my, from my point of view on this thing here, uh, it seems like we've got several non-conforming parcels already out there, um, and adding two more doesn't seem to be going in the right direction to me. Uh, we've been tasked to kind of, uh, discourage, uh, these rural residential developments. And from, I'm looking at the, um, aerial on this thing, and there's a, it looks like at least six homes just in the, in the aerial shot right there, and, um, I don't see any hardship on this thing, just having, just wanting to have, uh, a couple of parcels for your children or your family to build on. I'm sure there's lots of people in an A E twenty that like to cut an acre or two out, put their kids out there. Uh, we've got zoning ordinances for a reason, and in my opinion, I just don't think this is a good plan, good, good planning.
Is that a question to staff or?
No, it's not a question, it's a statement.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to clarify, at least you wanted a response. Any other comments?
So it's a good plan or not a good plan?
This is not good planning.
Not good planning, okay.
Right.
Findings, uh, A, we're saying that because there are other people there with this situation, uh, we're going to grandfather these people in because it's not fair? Is that what we're saying?
Well, through the chair, what we're saying here is that when these properties were zoning, the zoning changed on these properties from A one to A E twenty back in nineteen seventy-eight. Some people were already in place and some people were not. Um, it's unfortunate that the smaller acreage parcels also got A E twenties and A E forties on them, um, but you can see a lot of the stuff to the west of this property was kept into A one, uh, as a holding zone for the city of Kingsburg. Unfortunately, some of these properties to the east and south of the Kingsburg area plan, which we're hoping to expand, um, purchased a lot of these properties with the hopes of using them as residences, even though the zoning might have said otherwise, but the, um, this, this property itself would not be able to enjoy, uh, some of those other, um, uses that were out there, you know, pre-nineteen seventy-eight, just because of merely, uh, that nineteen seventy-eight rezoning and placing of the R V L P in the county. So it's, uh, as far as the planning department's concerned, we would prefer to move the Kingsburg area plan boundary further out into this area, but like, uh, Sandy said, there are certain limitations within the Kings River area plan. Um, so this, this complies with those plans generally as far as the limited residences out in this area. It's not like we're proposing to put subdivisions on the surrounding properties. Um, it's limited to this, this property. And we've been working with this property owner for, for a couple of years now, uh, to try to, like, uh, Mr. Diaz said, try to get, uh, houses for other family members, and this was the, uh, the only way we could, we could get there. So, um, as you can see from the aerial photograph, attachment number five, the, uh, surrounding properties would remain in agriculture, and, um, there's really no, no threat of this extending that much further into the, the Kings River area plan. Um, at some point, we may make an adjustment to both the Kings River area plan. There is development interest, uh, along, uh, Road sixteen on both sides. So if we adjust the Kings River area plan to extend into the Kings River plan, this area could come into, uh, being rezoned, but at this time, um, that, they want to move a little bit faster than the Kings, uh, area plan, so. So Kings, Kingsburg area plan. So this would be the only opportunity they really have to do this.
Aaron, there's A1 just almost contiguous, not exactly. There's one piece in between them. But wouldn't rezoning be more appropriate if that's kind of where we're heading in that direction anyway?
Well, yes and no. I think the rezoning, if you are worried about growth-inducing factors, I think the rezoning does get you there faster. If that's the desire of the community of Kingsburg and the county to do that, I'm just saying that's, we're looking at another year plus to get there. I think a variance is very limited in its application and would be consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. So the planning commission's in a better position to limit that growth through the variance at this time than there would be necessarily if that area was to get rezoned wholesale.
That's reasonable.
Any other comments from my fellow commissioners? Maria?
One question. I was looking through the documents online again and couldn't tell if there were any limitations on, is this a family parcel for the second parcel? Or is this could be sold to anybody?
The intention is to construct a house for a family member, parent, if I remember correctly.
That is correct. And unlike our use permits, it doesn't really have that limitation on the variance. But if it's the planning commission's desire to put that language in the findings, that you made your decisions based on it being for a family member, we could put that in the resolution.
It's probably absolutely unenforceable because once they build it and get it, it's...
Yeah, but again, just to put it in the findings.
Well, I was thinking of that maybe because if we're asked to do this in the future and then they can't say, or if somebody can't say, hey, it's consistent with, you know, free property for anybody, kind of thing.
We do this all the time, unfortunately. I'm just saying, you know, if you have a rule, it has to be enforceable, and this is practically not. So you've got three real estate guys here that could tell you.
That parcel number's created. It's on its own.
Yeah, that's just four. It's done. Okay? Any other discussion? If not, I'm looking for a motion for my fellow commissioners. It's two motions. So someone like to make that motion? This is four, again, so just need a motion, please. And I did close the public comment.
Let me get back to the motion and then I'll read it. But I'll make that motion. Is it up there? No? Yeah. Is it up there?
There's two motions at the bottom of your paper also. Okay?
Make a motion to approve categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code of Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to a new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approve zone variance number PZV 20-010.
Call for the vote, please. I have a second, I think, is I need first. Second? Someone make a second? Okay, vote? Yeah, we got a second. Okay, we have, yes, motion carried. Okay, we'll move for the second motion, please.
We'll continue with that. And this is a motion to approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approve tentative parcel map number PPM 20-020, and waiver of the final map.
Have a second, please. Call for the vote, please.
We'd ask that you announce, whoever's doing the second, say they're giving the second, or the chair, announce who the second is so the public can know.
Okay. So who made the second? Because I didn't know either. I was looking at my screen, so...
That was Steve.
Steve, thank you, Steve.
The person who's making the second should just announce that they're making the second.
Motion carried. Okay, we're moving right along to item...
Through the chair, I'd like to ask one clarifying question on item 5B to the planner on this project. This is for environmental impact report for item 5B. That is correct?
For item 5B, environmental impact report and special use permit? Yes, that's correct. Okay. That's all I was needing to put in there.
We're good? Okay. Thank you very much. Moving to 5B. It's a special use permit PSP 19-073, 20SD8ME. Somebody's have to tell me what that means. LLC, categorical exemption, a special use permit PSP 19-073, proposes to construct and operate a, oh, this is a 70-megawatt AC utility solar farm and up to 700-megawatts AC energy storage system. On the assessed parcels, totaling approximately, is that 3,000 or 3.614 acres?
3,000.
3,614 gross acres, an exclusive agricultural zone. Looks like there's also a 10-acre minimum, AE10, exclusive agricultural 40-acre minimum zones. The site is generally located south of Avenue 68, west of Road 272, north of Avenue 12, east of Road 216. Majority of the project is a site bisected by and lies east of State Route 65. Project is located in DuCor, Ridge Grove, USGS, 7.5-minute topographic quadra... Yeah, it's that word. With sections 20 to 23 and 20 to 36, township 23, south of range 27. And I'm not going to read the rest because it makes no sense. Nobody knows what that means. And it's located in Tulare County Assessor Parcels with a whole list of parcels. And Sandy, you are our staff.
And just another point of clarification, Chair, that is for an environmental impact report, and that is 700 megawatts. Go ahead, Sandy.
Is a 20SD8Me LLC, what's the first line of B? What's that mean?
Chairman, that's a name of the applicant. It's the company.
Okay.
The company name. And as Mr. Bach had mentioned earlier, on the agenda, there is an error, and there should not be any reference to a categorical exemption because this project does have an environmental impact report. And all of the information in your agenda packet, as far as the staff report, resolution, everything in there refers to the environmental impact report and not to a categorical exemption.
And our county council pointed it out to me that was to, that was going to happen early, so I forgot. But thank you, Sandy. Thank you, Harsher.
Chairman Whitlatch and members of the commission, before you now, for consideration is special use permit number PSP 19-073, which is the Rexford Solar and Energy Storage Project. The request is to allow the construction and operation of an up to 700-megawatt alternating-current utility-scale solar farm and an up to 700-megawatt AC energy storage system on 40 assessors' parcel numbers totaling approximately 3,614 gross acres in the AE10 and AE40 zone districts. Again, the applicant, the name of the company is 20SD8Me LLC. The location is in the unincorporated area of Tulare County. The majority of the project site is bisected by State Route 65 near the unincorporated community of DuCor. On the screen now is the hearing notification map. The public hearing notice was published on August 12th, 2020, which is, you know, within the, at least 10 days prior to the public hearing. Also in your agenda packet, there was also another public hearing notice that was published on July 8th. And the first notice that was published also contained language concerning the additional notification for the notice that was published on August 12th. The map on the screen now shows all of the parcels that are within the project site with the bold outline. And the shaded areas surrounding those would be the adjacent parcels that received public hearing notices. Entitlement is in section 16 of ordinance 352 as amended. And it allows the construction and operation of public utility structures in the AE10 and AE40 zones, subject to the approval of a special use permit. The screen now is showing the regional location of the project, which is just north of the Kern County-Tulare County border. The majority of it is around DuCor. And you can see, you know, approximate distance south of Porterville and Terabella.
So these parcels are not contiguous we're talking about?
No, they're not all contiguous.
They're all in a lot of different locations. Okay.
The next thing on the screen is a vicinity map, which zooms in a little bit closer to show you the configurations of the parcels that are proposed for the solar project. And the next item on the screen is the site plan, which shows the parcels that are proposed in the red outline. And the yellow lines are showing the transmission and/or collector lines. And the next image is an aerial photograph. The project site contains fallow agricultural fills, agricultural fills, developed intermittent stream, infern, yeah, imperal drainage, basin, isolated seasonal wetland, and irrigation ditch. The majority of the project site is located within the Rural Valley Lands Plan, while the easternmost parcels are located within the Foothill Growth Management Plan. A portion of the project site located in the RVLP is designated as Valley Agriculture. And section 3.11.4 on page 3.11-3 of the draft DIR states that this designation establishes areas for intensive agricultural activities on prime valley agricultural soils and other productive or potentially productive valley lands where commercial agricultural uses can exist without conflicting with other uses or where conflicts can be mitigated. Uses typically allowed include irrigated crop production, orchards, vineyards, livestock, resource extraction activities and facilities that directly support agricultural operations such as processing and other necessary public utility and safety facilities. A portion of the project site is located within the FGMP and is designated as Valley Agricultural Extension and Extensive Agriculture. Section 3.11.4 on page 3-11, or excuse me, 3.11-5 of the draft DIR states that the Valley Agricultural Extension designation is for areas that would be considered part of the FGMP where extension of the valley warrants identifying the land as part of the valley. Extensive agriculture designation is for areas in the foothills where development may not occur due to access constraints, emergency response time slope, and other biological or archaeological factors that prohibit safe development. The project site is consistent with the relevant general plan policies, which are listed in your packet and are on the screen as well.
Can I just remind you to speak into the microphone because we're getting calls that they can't hear the public?
Okay. The next item would be the existing zoning map, which shows the project site being within the AE10 and also in the AE40 zone district. The site is zoned AE10 and AE40. Section 3.11.4 on page 3.11-5 of the draft DIR states that the majority of the project site is zoned AE40, with the exception of the northernmost parcels. And there are, those are APNs 321-040-007, 008, 011, and 025. And those are zoned AE10. These zoning districts are exclusive zones for intensive agricultural uses and for uses which are necessary and integral part of an agricultural operation. The purpose of these zones is to protect the general welfare of the agricultural community and prevent encroachment of non-agricultural uses. Tulare County Zoning Ordinance Number 352 by Board of Supervisors Resolution 2010-0458 and as amended by Resolution 2010-0590. Adopted zoning interpretation that solar and wind electrical generation facilities are included within the meaning of private and public utility structures. And where the electrical generation is designated for off-site sale is subject to a special use permit. The proposal, if approved, would be consistent with the zoning ordinance. Concerning Williamson Act consistency, 37 of the 40 APNs that make up the project site are restricted by Williamson Act contracts. And three of the APNs are not under contract. The substantiation for subparagraph B in section 3.2.6 on page 3.2-10 of the draft DIR states that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors defined allowable uses on contracted lands in Resolution Number 89-1275, which established uniform rules for agricultural use. Resolution Number 89-1275 and 99-0620 established the construction of gas, electric, water, and community utility facilities as compatible uses for lands under a Williamson Act contract. The substantiation for subparagraph B in section 3.2.6 on page 3.2-10 of the draft DIR also states that Resolutions 2010-0717 and 2013-0104 subsequently created a two-level process which solar facilities can be found as compatible on Williamson Act contracted lands. This allows impaired agricultural lands to be but to the highest and best use without canceling the Williamson Act contracts, therefore preserving the option to return to farming of land in the future. Pending the approval of the special use permit for the proposed project and the approval of the findings of compatibility under the Williamson Act, the project will present a temporary change in land use that has been found to be compatible with the terms... a temporary change in land use that has been found to be compatible with the terms of the existing Williamson Act contract on the project site. The project conforms to the principles of compatibility set forth in Government Code And also, there is a Williamson Act conformity analysis in your packet, which is Attachment Number 4. The item on the screen now shows the farmland designation and the project li-- excuse me, the project site is within areas designated as farmland of local importance. It is not prime land. It's not land of statewide importance. It is designated as local importance. The next diagram shows typical inverter stations and how they would appear. And the next one shows typical energy storage systems, followed by typical substation design. The next diagram shows transmission and/or collector line alignment overview, with the yellow lines indicating where those lines would be located. The next diagram shows sensitive receptor locations in relation to the project site. And in the next few slides, it's going to be showing land cover for the parcels within the project site. And there's Land Cover Map 1, Land Cover Map 2, Land Cover Map 3, and Land Cover Map 4, which is, you know, typically either fallow or dry land farming. This concludes the staff report for my portion of the project. Hector Guerra is also here from Environmental Planning, and his section dealt with the environmental impact report. In addition, the consultant that prepared the environmental impact report is also here today. And I was going to check with Aaron to see if he was going to want anyone, any of those people to speak.
Yes, we can open the public hearing in a second if that'd be okay, sure. And then we could do the presentation from the applicant as part of the public hearing. I just wanted to note, there are two letters, emails, that we received. One from Caltrans saying the county has adequately addressed all of Caltrans concerns. And then there was a last-minute response from Department of Conservation, mostly dealing with old oil or gas wells. And the applicants responded to those responses as well. So those are, I just want to make sure they're in the record to perfect the record regarding the draft EIR, so they're there.
Before I open the public testimony, I want to first go to my planning commissioners to see if they have any questions for Sandy, and then we'll go to the, and you'll get a second chance. So if anyone would ask, want to ask Sandy some questions, or we can save it for the end.
Sure.
Sandy, I was noticing on the map that one of the transmission lines looks like it's going over the waterway that's there. How, maybe I'm reading it wrong, but how would that work?
Okay, it may be better if I have the environmental section talk about that concerning the crossing of, you know, anything like a river or a stream. I do know that it is addressed in the environmental impact report.
We will have applicant come and save that thought.
Okay.
Go ahead, Steve.
It's my understanding that it looks like some of this land is already fallow, not being in production?
That's correct.
Is there a percentage that is in production and not in production?
I don't have that percentage committed to memory. However, the EIR consultant may possibly have that information.
Thank you.
So we'll save that thought, okay? Anybody else? Okay. Scene, no further comment. We'll go ahead to the, open the public testimony, and, so stick around, Sandy. If anyone would like to, the applicant would like to come forward and speak, please? And we also have people on the phone, is that correct, Elma?
I don't have any at this time.
Okay. So we'll give a minute at the end, so. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, good morning. My name is Alex Sunquist, and that's 5455 Wolsher Boulevard in Los Angeles, 90036. Okay? Thank you. Was asked to just give a brief presentation about who we are and what this project is about. Let me know if callers can't hear me. So I thought I would start very, right at the beginning with explaining where our name comes from. We get that question a lot. Eight minutes, takes eight minutes for sunlight to reach the earth from the sun. Back in the old days, I actually got a call when we first started from a sales guy wondering what kind of energy sports drink we were. I thought that was incredibly funny, and also that that would be probably the worst sports drinks ever made, if it ever, if it only lasted eight minutes. There was a question earlier about the 20SD-8ME LLC, that's our project entity name. There is some weird algorithm that gets applied to that. I don't exactly know what it is anymore, but it used to be that the numbers would indicate the deal that we looked at, so this would, that would be the 20th landowner, and SD would be the initials of landowner. I don't think that's the case anymore, but that's where that comes from. So very briefly about us, we started about 10 years ago now with a mission to produce the lowest-cost clean energy possible. And to that end, all we do is utility scale solar. And that would be solar photovoltaic, so it's the same panels that you see on people's roofs. We don't do the big towers with the mirrors and all that. We don't do rooftop solar, not that we have anything against any of those folks. We just do ground-mounted plain vanilla photovoltaic panels. And so we've been busy over the last 10 years. I think to date, we have about 2 gigawatts producing power online today. And that's primarily in Kern County and Imperial County. We actually started in Imperial County. And we have, I believe it's about 3.5 gigawatts contracted by various utilities. And then also a 18 gigawatt pipeline, and that's, that's a lot. So we've been busy, like I said, we are a small company, relatively speaking, and we're a fairly young company, but we've, we've done some big things. Here on this slide, you can see some of our projects. We've tried to select some projects that are sited on, on former ag land. And so Mount Signal was actually the first project we did in, in Imperial County, the first large project we did, I should say. And even the Springbok 3 project there down in the bottom right corner, that looks like it's on desert, which it is. However, that used to actually be alfalfa, an alfalfa farm back in the 90s, I want to say. So they ran out of water, and we came in and built a relatively large solar farm there. So we've been in ag communities before. We are sensitive to the unique issues that come up, and so we, you know, we always try to be a good neighbor to the best of our ability. A little bit about the project, planning staff did a very good job of outlining the project. I won't dwell on this slide, except to say that the planned online date for this would be the end of 2023, which means that we would start construction potentially as soon as the, the end of this coming year. Here is another map of the project. You've seen this already. One of the questions we get asked a lot is, why is this so scattered? Doesn't it just make sense to construct it in a big square? We would love that. Unfortunately, that, that is almost never the case. So citing is primarily driven by where is a substation that has capacity? In this case, it's Vestal Substation, and, and then we basically draw a radius. We do a bunch of searching, which landowners are willing to do deals with us? Where is the lowest productivity farmland? Where are the potential water issues? Things like that. So we do a lot of different screenings, where are the potential bio issues that we need to avoid? And this is kind of the, the spaghetti that we end up with, unfortunately. Again, it's not our ideal, but we try to stay away from folks as much as possible in any potential issues. So that's, that's why this looks this way. And finally, I just wanted to outline some of the, the kind of key benefits from the project. It is true that once a farm is built, there aren't a lot of jobs. It's a fairly boring project, frankly. If you've ever been to a solar farm, I'm welcome to you to visit any of our sites. It will be the most boring site visit you've ever had. It just kind of sits there producing power, clean power quietly. But these are good jobs, they're jobs with benefits. But really during construction, and with a, the farm of this scale, you've got a lot of folks working on this for, for multiple years. So for a 700-megawatt project, you're talking three, four years if the project is fully built out. And at peak, you'd have right around 800, 1,000 workers onsite on any given day. Typically, it's more like 200 to 300 workers, steady state. You obviously avoid a lot of CO2 emissions. 1.1 metric tons, that's difficult for me to kind of visualize. So what's, what I like to say here is that if you planted trees on this site on the 3,600 acres, you would still not do as well as a solar farm in terms of displacing carbon dioxide. And then finally, and certainly not, not least, if the project is fully built out, so you build out the full 700 megawatts, you're talking about a $1.1 billion direct investment into Tulare County, and that does not count indirect investment as well.
Much water do we save?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if, Tim, you know, but most of the water is used during construction, and that's primarily for dust suppression, honestly. Once the project is operational, it's really about washing panels a couple times a year. On some projects, we don't even wash the panels, so it'd be fairly minimal water use, certainly.
Yes, sales tax recognized for the hardware.
I'm sorry?
Sales tax recognized for the purchase of hardware here, Tulare County?
That's a good question, yeah, typically in the county itself.
Through, through the chair, we enter into a side of sales ta-- we enter into a side of sales tax agreement with the applicant, so the sales tax revenue would be generated from here.
That's, that's right. And I should also point out that these construction jobs, we, we always try to hire as many locals as possible. Imperial County, I think the number is north of 80%. Correct me if I'm wrong. So we always try to do that, job fairs, et cetera.
This is an area that's had, it's impacted water, water levels, so probably, my feeling is good. It takes the burden off of our groundwater, so.
Yeah, yeah, great.
Okay, keep going.
That's all I've got. I'm here to answer any other questions. My colleagues are here as well, Sal and Tim.
Would you like to ask Maria or Steve or?
Chairman? I typically ask a lot, but no, these are pretty harmless this time. I'm holding the waterways question for the impact, environmental one. But as, this is the first time I see a number like this on a solar project in such a pretty form. It's a pretty presentation. But the $1.1 billion direct investment into Tulare County, can you give us examples of what that is, where that comes from?
Yeah, and that, that's basically the cost of actually constructing the projects. That, that includes actual, the equipment, so the panels, the transformers, the fencing, the, you know, the roads, and all the consulting and EPC and all that stuff that was into actually constructing the project.
Okay, but is that coming from outside, or do we produce? I don't know that we have--
So that, so that's the, the money that we basically inject into the project, which would be then in the county. And so a portion of that then would go to the county in the form of taxes.
Where the items are sourced?
Well, the other, the part of the agreement with the developer agreement is we receive $1,000 a megawatt, so they, they've already agreed to that, and they'll have to agree to it again in front of the Board of Supervisors. So that's, that's the money we get in addition to. And on top of that, they are also proposing a franchise ordinance. They'll be the first in the county to help support the cost of any of their off-site improvements through the encroachment process. So that'd be another way that we will see some of that investment money returning or staying in the county.
I should say too, this does not count things like, you know, all the restaurants will be busy, hotels and motels will be busy typically as well. So things like that aren't in this number. This is purely the actual project cost, if you will, to construct it.
But most of that would probably be invested elsewhere, but just brought to Tulare County, right? Because I don't, do we have, I don't know that we have all the resources here for that.
As far as the--
Materials and et cetera.
Oh, yeah, but, right. So a lot of that would be generated elsewhere, but I, I think you'll see some of that sales tax revenue returning. Also, the investment in the local jobs--
That's right.
--that will stay here. So the, on the employment side, you'll see, but I think the, whatever we can or they can use that the county is capable of producing, they would, but otherwise, yeah, some of that's going to definitely come offsite.
So that was a multi-part, single question, which is kind of rhetorical. But I did have another question, which--
Yes.
--is probably a little easier. And I don't know, you know, if this is possible or not possible, and, and I see some people in the room who, who may be working or would like to work on this project. But this Tulare County, and I'm wondering if there's any kind of preference for Tulare County staff, if you want to call it--
In terms of the construction workers?
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely, yeah, 100%. Like I said, in Imperial County, we've been, it's north of 80% local hires for construction workers, and we would attempt to do the same here as well. Job fairs, et cetera, training programs to the extent that they're available.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely. Now, of course, they need to be drug-free and willing to work hard, but, but, yeah, certainly.
Okay.
Does this project have onsite storage, battery storage, or is this just a transmission site?
It would, yeah, potentially have up to 700-megawatt battery as well.
Because that seems to be the problem up north--
Yeah.
--of running out of power.
That's right, yeah.
Because it's all--
Yeah, yeah, that is the plan--
It's not all solar-generated, but--
Correct, yeah, that is the plan to have battery storage on this project as well. I think, I think you'll see that most solar farms at this point will probably have some storage component.
Yeah. In real estate, we talk about development and the planning, and we talk about basic employment and something that's common among developers. So the reality is basically, this is a basic industry once it's completed, because you're exporting, and you have to confirm this with me, you're exporting the electricity. So there's, we're sending the converted sun through the panels, and, so do we get a percentage of it? I thought Aaron said that, that would--
That we get the $1,000 per megawatt per year?
So that mean, that's good, because then it becomes a basic industry. And, and then there's all the other jobs that are created that, like the motels, because typically, construction workers, this is a two-year project?
Well, the entire 700-megawatts is built out. We're talking probably closer to four years.
Yeah, so typically, you can't hire everybody, so you have construction companies, and they send their workers to, to live in Porterville or something during the--
That's right.
--construction. So there's also the benefit of that. It's hard to put a dollar amount of that.
Yeah, I didn't try to put a dollar number on that one, but that would be, we would consider that an indirect investment. I, I will say too, that, you know, this is our first project in Tulare, assuming if it gets approved, and we certainly would not want it to be our last.
You have to have a little oki in you to understand how to pronounce that word. It's Tulare, Tulare.
Tulare.
We used to have a fellow on the planning commission that was from Oklahoma, and one time we had someone, and he, and he says, "I speak oki." He says, "I'm from Oklahoma." Tulare.
Tulare, there you go.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes. Have you, people secured your PPAs from the power companies yet?
Negotiated right now, yeah, and they're, unfortunately, confidential.
Is that, is that Vestal Substation set up to take 700-megawatts?
Yes, I believe so.
Transmission lines have the capacity for it?
Yes, although we would obviously have to build our own Gentite to get into the substation.
To get into the substation.
Yeah, we, that's why we try to be as close as possible, because those things are incredibly expensive to build, but yeah.
How, how long do you expect the PPAs to last?
They're typically 35 years, give or take.
And then you've got a reclamation plan, right, at the end of this?
Yeah, reclamation plan, there would be a bond as well. And, and these are fairly, I mean, as you probably know, fairly light on land. I mean, there's, farmland ideally is, is pretty flat, and so there's not a lot that we need to do there. Typically, we just drive piles down to the ground, and they're easy to remove at the end of the day. And frankly, there's a lot of-- And frankly, there's a lot of recycling value to the materials. I mean, steel's expensive, so we want that back too.
Okay. I haven't read it, but Aaron, we've got, do we have anything like we did in case they lose the PPA or something that, if it's idle for two years?
Yeah, put the standard conditions that we created before that Deer Creek project into their conditions of approval.
Right, okay, all right, yeah, okay. No, I'm fine.
Any other questions?
Okay. In response to Maria, this is at the very edge of Tulare County, so they probably will get a lot of Kern County employees as well.
And that's fine.
Taking care of my people, trying anyway.
The population of Tulare County is very small in that area, so I would imagine Kern County is probably going to get more.
And certainly, let's try to hire as many locals as possible. We firmly believe that's important.
Stay early, Mark. So is there any other questions? If not, thank you, and then we'll go back to our staff, okay? Anyone else like to?
We got more, yeah. Before we get another comment, I just, one, Hector brought the EIR up to me, and so there's total avoidance of any wetlands through this project. They, as stated, they will avoid any wetlands, and there wasn't really a comparative analysis, but it's looking about 450 acre-feet of water, which.
They come down the white.
Really, it's about 60 AFY, but I mean, you can imagine farmland's much, much more than that. So I think this will reduce the water footprint of this project, especially in relationship to SIGMA, and how much the farmers are going to actually have to reduce themselves. So, but if the consultant wants to speak to that a little bit more to answer that question, we can wait till the end of all the comments.
I have a follow-up question for Aaron, if that's okay?
Who?
For Aaron on this comment.
Go ahead.
Okay, so if.
You'll get a chance at the end, too, so.
No, I just, while it's fresh. The map that I saw, or that was shown, showed, looked like to me the transmission line was going over the river. How is, is that something that I imagined, or is that?
Well, the White River's there, so.
Or is wetlands being defined differently than a river?
No, the wetlands avoided by the solar arrays. If we're doing a river crossing, then they'd have to go through all the standard permitting. And whether over or under, they would typically have to go through CDFW and, like we do for all our bridge projects.
Okay.
Go ahead. If you could explain that process a little bit.
Tim Ganevas with HDR Engineering. I'm the environmental consultant.
Where are you?
3230 El Camino Real, Irvine, California.
Okay.
To explain that, the applicant has every desire to avoid any impacts to jurisdictional areas, and that's possible by just spanning the river. For example, the, you put a transmission facility on one side, outside of the jurisdictional area, and then on the other side of the riverbank, so to speak, and then string it across without having to disturb the actual river area. So that's the, that's the goal, and they've been pretty successful in doing that across the state on numerous projects, so very feasible to do in this situation.
And could you also answer that question about the comparative water usage?
Yeah, so a water supply assessment was prepared and is included in the, in the environmental impact report. The historical data regarding water use on the project site is kind of spotty, so it's hard to do a comparison. The other thing is, most of the farmland out there is not being irrigated at this time, so we don't have up-to-date records on water usage. But what it does is it takes the agricultural use that could potentially occur kind of out of the picture, so you would not be using water for agricultural uses in the future. And comparatively, this would, this project would use considerably less if you applied it on a per-acre basis as compared to agriculture.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have another anxious person that's been waiting.
Best for last? I don't know about that. My name is Dave Clark. I reside at 935 Cambridge in Exeter, and I am the Director of Membership Development for the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. One of the first things before I forget about that I wanted to address is, there will be local hire language for this job. This project does have a project labor agreement on it with most of the crafts that are going to work on it, which will ensure that it'll come out of the local union halls, local hire. On top of that, I sit on the advisory board for Porterville Unified and their renewable energy pathway, and so I plan on using this to direct as many students as I possibly can to this job. The, that area of DuCor, there's not a whole lot out there. So over the course of this, this job, all the people leaving the site to go get lunch will generate a lot of, a lot of revenue in that local community there, the gas stations and the stuff around there, so. But the, one of the, my boss normally would come, but he's, he's out of town, but he sits on the Tulare County Workforce Investment Board of Directors, as well as the Kings County Workforce Investment Board of Directors. And projects like these are vital to the economic recovery of Tulare County. We talked, heard already about the amount of people that will be on the job, just in wages, monthly wages that will be infused into local people in this area. I mean, I don't even know how to quite calculate a project of this size. Most of these solar jobs that we see are usually 200 megawatts and under. This is a really big one. So all the, the people working on the job will have a good wage and benefits with healthcare and retirement. And we also have deals with the workforce connection, workforce development programs, where people meeting qualifications can get work boots and clothing and things like that. On top of those things, the people that have, that come to us for this project that have no experience whatsoever, they are going to get training and experience by highly-trained people in the field, that even if they don't stick with the, any of the crafts, any of the unions, they take that with them. And they're, they're getting skills to go out there and get employment after this project ends, so I think that's about really all I wanted to add.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to comment on this project?
No, from the Farm Bureau that they would like read into the record.
Okay, go ahead, Velma.
Dear Tulare County Planning Commissioners.
Your mascot, Velma, would you?
I'm sorry?
Take your, your muffler.
Oh, sorry, okay. Dear Tulare County Planning Commissioners, thank you for your continued commitment to the preservation integrity of the Williamson Act, as long as, as longstanding tool of the state to preserve farmland. We thank the county for their long-term support of this conservative tool to keep visible farmland in farming. We provide comments in a joint letter with our California Farm Bureau's legal counsel on the Rexford Solar Project earlier this year to contribute to the discussion on the matter of the Williamson Act and compatibility with solar. I know the county has found that the solar is deemed compatible, and while we do not hold the same opinion, we recognize that in the light of the economic difficulties of farming, particularly in the regions where groundwater and/or surface water accessibility has been curtailed or never existed, that giving landowners an opportunity to diversify their income and utilize their lands to full value is difficult and requires due consideration. We thank the Board of Supervisors and the county for recognizing that the tax preference in the Williamson Act is intended for ag land preservation and not for use such as solar. We are not opposed to the project, but do wish to have our comments heard about protecting the integrity of the act. We hope that this large solar development is approved, that it will afford the owners of the parcels the chance to invest in farming other more suitable ground in the region and protect the long-term integrity of the Williamson Act. With the county recently opening new enrollments for Williamson Act contracts, we remain committed to protecting the act's original intent, to provide an incentive to keep farming the land and receive preferential tax treatment for making that commitment to the agricultural production. If non-renewal is indicated, perhaps other farmlands could be enrolled in the program now that Tulare County is allowing additional Williamson Act contracts. Thank you for reviewing our comments and input. Sincerely, Tricia Steve Blatter.
Thank you. So the fellow in orange, I think, wanted to comment? Someone in the back, no? You need, you gotta cut back on those weights, Mike, they're way too big. Making me feel old. I am old, I think of it.
Good morning. I'd like to thank the board members for allowing me to speak today. My name is Rexdale Rio. I'm an apprentice ironworker from local 155. My home's located at 218 West Addy Tulare. I'm from Tulare County. Since I became an ironworker, I've been able to make awesome wages and benefits for myself and my family. Most of the projects I've worked on have been out of town, and I'm here today to support ME Rexford Solar Farm, because it will provide good-paying jobs, create non-polluting energy, and give us the opportunity to work closer to home, enable us to increase quality time with our families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, and thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment? And seeing none, I'm going to wait 60 seconds to see if someone wants to call in, starting now, and then I will close the.
Is there a response to that email?
Yeah, we can respond. We did respond to all the comments, and it really did come down to that tax question, you know, but that is the way the Williamson Act works. And also, like she stated, we did start the allowance of properties back into the Williamson Act, so to respond to that, that's a very positive thing. So net-wise, we don't, if we lose some actual Williamson Act land, which we're not, but if we were, there's also the additional Williamson Act land coming in. So from what I heard from that letter, you know, we should end up net positive in general.
I started the one minute, so we're, just give me about 15 more seconds, and we'll let you talk, Mike.
Sure, yeah. I like to thank you for considering this.
Hold on, we gotta wait for the 15 seconds, wait for somebody to call in.
Okay, now.
Okay, we waited a whole minute, so.
Great. I just wanted to make a few words, comments. Mike Washam, Economic Development Director, RMA. This, this project was, just a few things, I have comments that I heard. This was the most robustly published notification of neighbors. We had not one, but two publications, and you saw that map. We've never published so much and sent direct information to so many, and I believe we only received one adjacent neighbor's comments at all that we addressed in the EIR. It's about jobs, jobs, jobs right now, as well as long-term sustainability for those lands and those farmers, that provides options and flexibility for them to, to create some income, and then as, as the Farm Bureau Directors mentioned, maybe provide opportunities for farming in other areas or other lands. If you looked at the map, one of the questions was regarding the, kind of a puzzle piece configuration. That falls, although it wasn't presented in this presentation, when we went to the board back in 2010 to 2013, when the board made, made that interpretation that solar and wind generation utility projects are compatible with the Williamson Act in the uniform rules, which it is, those, during that time, we created maps of areas that are, that we encourage solar compatibility with, and that's, that map matches pretty darn close to what this map is. It's those areas that aren't prime or aren't statewide significant lands. So that falls right into that. Just to give you an idea, too, on the, on the 700,000 megawatts, that breaks down to just approximately 180,000 households, 100% of their, their utility use, their electric use per year, annual, that's day and night, that's their whole electrical use. It would supply 180 households. That combined with what we have in the county already operating, we're becoming a green, we're self-sustaining. As far as we're producing more electrical energy, once this project is done, then households throughout the county are consuming. So we're an exporter of energy rather than an importer, and this is green energy. And then you combine that with our activities with natural gas and renewables there, we're really a forward-thinking county. Just to touch base, we do have those agreements in place for sales tax, for the SITUS to be the location of the project itself. That was something that happened early on in development of utility-scale projects. We found that a contractor from LA, the sale was in LA, so LA got the benefit of that. Well, we made a stop to that, and the developers are completely agreeable, because it really doesn't matter to them anyway. We're just maximizing our revenue from the tat, whatever sales tax is available there. As far as the jobs creation, the multiplier effect is huge, because again, this is in the South County, so you will draw from Kern County, Tulano, Bakersfield, Porterville will draw a lot of workers, I'm sure, as well as other areas in the South County. So this is a great job builder for those two years. But then also, when they go to rent equipment and all those with the contractors, those are usually local vendors as well, so there's a multiplier effect. It's not just, it's not just the purchase of the material that is being put into the ground, the solar panels, it's also all the construction activities will circulate within our local economy, and that multiplier effect is of great benefit. And then we'll have the reclamation plan in there too that has bonding, so we'll make sure that the land can be reclaimed. The other thing is battery storage, yes, this is probably the larger battery storage has been growing as well. Initially, battery storage was there to kind of smooth out the highs and lows of, like if all of a sudden a cloud cover comes in and you get that fluctuation, that battery storage capacity was able to smooth that out. Now, at this stage of technology, they're storing electricity, so at that peak demand, just as the sun is setting, that peak demand, they're able to take that stored energy and put it back into the grid when the grid needs it the most, at the peak demand in the, in the early evening hours. So that's all where technology's going, and again, I think this is a great project and a great project for the county. Thanks.
Do you care, or is it just something that the eight-minute sources, low, sources US-made photovoltaic, or do they, or do we care?
I personally don't know, I don't know what their, their plans are for that, but we usually leave that business decisions up to the developer to, we don't normally force those types of situations onto, onto a business model for a company, but they can address their sourcing.
Are counties asking for that now, or not? They don't care?
And I just, final comment on the Williamson Act. The land will be, there's exemptions for property tax valuations based on the green renewable energy. However, there are infrastructure improvements that will be made to the ground as far as land, roads and other infrastructure improvements. And whether it's in the Williamson Act or not, the assessor will be valuing that, and they'll be paying on that. It's not like it's just a free, free ride, so.
That's what I was going to ask, because I noted that, you know, they're getting a tax break, and now they're, now the property owners are making a business, you know, by leasing this land, so I wanted to make sure there was something there.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks.
Okay, I think I'll close the public testimony. If I didn't already, I'll do it again, and I'll move to my fellow commissioners for questions or a motion.
You know, I find it disappointing that our own Farm Bureau continues to take the narrow-minded approach that solar is not compatible on a farm ground, basically because when they're farming, they're harvesting the sun and turning it into energy in the form of fuel and fiber, and if you're on solar, you're harvesting the sun and turning it into energy via photovoltaic activity. So there's no difference. And also, this has given some landowners an opportunity to generate some income on ground that they, up to this point in time, haven't been able to make very much money on at all. And time-wise, I mean, 30, 35 years, I mean, that's like planting a grove of trees, and you're going to farm it for the next 30 years, and then take it out. There's a reclamation plan on this thing. This thing's going to be brought back to farmland. The Williamson Act's gonna be preserved if there's water available and things change. It can go right back to farmland. So, this is, you know, from the Farm Bureau's point of view, it's kind of short-sighted on that. And that, that's kind of disappointing. So, but we, the other point is that we kind of need this. We just, what, last week with this hot thing, we had these rolling brownouts coming through here. And we need these utility-grade sized units or projects to go on to the grid, particularly since the state has mandated that we're gonna have renewable energy and that we're gonna be decommissioning nuclear and fossil fuel plants. We have, this is, this is an absolute necessity on this. So, I really don't see a downside to this thing here. We're, the landowners are making money, the state's getting the deal. We got, we got local people working and on the job. And at the end of the day, when everything's done, they pull it out and recycle it.
Was that a motion?
I think it's-
Was that a motion?
No, it's not yet.
Better place, so.
Yeah.
It's all dry land out there.
Yeah, the canal is sinking into the ground. That's part of the-
And I know it's a large, a large project. And people say, gee, that takes a lot of ground, but, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a good project. My only concern is with the waterways. And I just want to make sure that when permits and all that start coming through, that they're like extra protected.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And just to verify that, the EIR and what's been discussed today, we're going to avoid the waterways. So, that, in, either way, like I was saying, worst-case scenario, they'd have to go through the regular permitting process. So, that's not of great concern to us right now, given this project. But I did want to say to Mr. Diaz there, the, from the comment letters you have in the EIR and our responses to it, to this final email from the-
Is that an adequate response?
The Farm Bureau, I think they've, I wouldn't be too hard on them. They sound like they're saying some of the same things. But the, we do agree that some of those concerns in this situation-
At least they're not opposing the project. In the past, they've actually opposed the project.
We're okay with that.
Someone like to make a motion, please? There's two motions, actually.
Motion by Gil Aguilar.
Do you have to read it, or no?
I'm gonna do it.
Do you have to read it, or?
I am.
Oh, okay.
I just want to make sure that the name is said.
Got it.
Motion to approve, certify, and adopt the environmental impact reports, SEQA findings of fact and mitigation monitoring report program for special use permit number PSP 19-073, as being in compliance with the California Environmental Act SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines for the implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act of 1970.
Velma, bring up the motion board, please. She did. I don't know, I know, I'm on the wrong page.
It was seconded by Wayne Millies.
Okay. Push the button, Wayne. Did you? Okay. Vote?
Waiting on Mr. Pearson's vote. There you go.
Okay, motion carried, 7-0. Need the next part, please, a motion? It's good, Gil, do it again.
All right, Gil. Make a motion to approve special use permit number PSP 19073 and adopt a resolution establishing findings and conditions of approval for the project.
Have a second? Oh, it's already done. Who made the second, please?
Who made the second?
Wayne Millies.
Wayne made the second, okay. Roll call and vote? Thank you for coming. Thank you for your testimony. And we, it's a nice, clean business. We like it, so, thank you. Moving on to staff, our directors' report.
Chairman, Commissioners, Aaron Bach, Planning Director, Tulare County Resource Management Agency. Just to make a quick, some quick comments. Yesterday, we had the appeal between the wonderful company, the wonderful company, old Paramount Citrus, and the Arrow Pistachio went before the Board. I'm sure people are reading newspaper articles about it.
Could you shut the door on your way out, please? Thank you. Congratulations.
So, the Board denied the appeal yesterday. A lot of comments made about pure competition driving challenges to our use permit from '96 and the subsequent minor modifications and the negative declaration and all the subsequent notices of exemption. They thought the building permits didn't match the minor modifications, which they absolutely did. So, it was an interesting, interesting hearing yesterday at the Board-
These are the same people in Terrabilla, correct?
Yeah.
This used to be set in-
No, it's not, it's not set. Arrow's its own, its own entity. They've been on the land, the semi. They've been on the land for, you know, since the 70s, as far as the pistachios.
Okay.
But the, it was originally a small processing facility. And then the ordinance changed for the zoning code back in 80s. And then, so after that, you had to get a use permit for ag service establishments. And so, because they had 5,000 square feet, 13,000 square feet of additional building, they had to get a use permit then. So, they've been slowly growing to the size they are now. But we do, our general plan allows us to grow agriculture-related facilities. And so, they, or, you know, the argument is they wouldn't have standing anyway, given that the last minor modification was done two years ago. Statute of limitations is run on zoning and SEQA. But they're trying to, you know, use this backdoor of the building permit process, the ministerial process, to say because they're out of compliance, they should have never approved the building permits. But we'll see, they are in court now. They decided, because we postponed the date of the hearing, they decided that they wouldn't be given the full opportunity to exhaust their remedies. So, they decided to move ahead and move forward the injunction. So, interestingly enough, when we go back with our findings to the Board, that'll be about the same time. They might get a ruling in court. So, we'll see how that all goes. So, we've been working with that. We've been working with the City of Kingsburg. We're gonna, like we were just discussing a little bit today. We've kind of had a hiatus on a lot of our general plan projects. Yeah, we'll start it back up with the City of Kingsburg after this four-month hiatus to start doing workshops there. So, we're a little bit behind as far as our ultimate desire to get a lot of these out within a year from the time we started. Kingsburg might be a little bit more interesting, because they'll probably require an environmental impact report in the SEQA process. But at the same time, that's probably one of the best locations that we'll see development in the county outside of Goshen right now. Goshen's moving forward as far as Lucky's Travel Center. And then, right across the street, Omni, which came through here and went to the Board. And right across the street, Western Milling, who's moving towards finalizing their building permits. Of that, they opened the first Starbucks in the county. And, you know, that's a big step forward. But outside of that one project, you'll see all that Betty Drive really grow over the next year. So, we are trying to help all the developers, as much as we can, get through the processes without creating too much, too many impacts to each other out there. That would be the worst-case scenario, is that, you know, you start getting a little fighting between the developers. So, right now, they're, they're all playing very nice and trying to work out all the little details of who's gotta move sidewalks here and there, pushback, right turn pockets. Yeah, but we're getting really close to the, I'd say within the next month, we should have all the agreements in place for that, for that project.
Any idea when that subdivision's gonna start in West Goshen?
The, right now, we're looking at, they're just getting the map completed. They were still working on their improvement plans. It's a little slow going on the sewer side with the Goshen CSD. But the, they did have those, those sewer improvement plans as of two months ago were really, really close to being completed. So, you know, Weber's working on those as well. So, with coronavirus and everything, it's a little bit slower process. But I'd say they're probably within three months, four months from getting a final map to the Board with all the agreements in place, the assessment agreements that are required with the final map.
You know, there used to be a road and the sewer goes right down the middle behind Kerm and Mobile Home Sales. And I know that the county is abandoning that road. I just want to remind you, don't forget about your sewer, because that's what's gonna connect to that subdivision.
Right. And when we done, when we did the Goshen Community Plan, our sewer analysis showed that they would need two pump stations. And that was based on the engineer's report, I'd say from a decade ago. But that same engineer was able to figure out a way to gravity feed it and now quad knobs involved, knobs involved. And they're pretty consistent on the gravity feed. But it's, I think there was a sigh of relief, because the cost was gonna be so much less for the gravity-fed system. But the reality is, it's almost as costly as two pump stations. So, I'm sure Ken Turner and Smee are trying to, you know, figure out to, how to get the cost down on that. Because that was, you know, half a million dollars that they'd have to outweigh. And there's no real reimbursement mechanisms that they create, future capacity for other developers. So, they probably have to sharpen the pencils a little bit to make sure that math, math works for them. Outside of that, the, still continuing to work on the environmental justice project. We have a new Civic Sparks Fellow coming in to replace Arlen, beginning in September, a fellow Cal Poly grad. And he's, he's looking really good as far as his background and his desire to get things done. So, hopefully, we'll be able to get right back on the horse there with Arlen's leaving as far as the environmental justice element we're working on. But that's still out there. There's a little ways till we get to a final product that we can bring before you. So, that's all I have. Did you have anything, Johnson? All right, and then Hector, anything you want to talk about? No, we're all good.
Any confessions? Plant, any confessions?
I went out to that Starbucks a couple days ago. And just because Eddie, well Supervisor Valera, had posted about it. And I went out there, you know, support it with my one bread and sandwich. But I was really happy to see the little dog or animal rest area, little park. I mean, it's not a full-blown park, but it's a park. Little, kind of sort of. So, I liked that.
So, they were listening to you?
What's that?
Just across the street, the dog park? They were actually listening to you? Remember, you asked Omni to put a park in?
Yeah, but is that, is that an Omni development? No.
Street.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Your copyright, you didn't take it for free, right?
Absolutely paid for it.
Good girl, I like that.
I was not gonna throw around any names or anything, but they would have charged me double anyway, you know.
She's allowed $250 worth a year.
Okay.
Allowed $250 worth a year.
I have receipt, I have a receipt.
Okay, anything else for the good of the cause? Otherwise, be adjourned.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah.
How big is this, how big was that one that you did over there?